Second, if you'll please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. McCoy?
Heavenly Father, we ask for guidance to Russia in the future discountering. Give us wisdom. We pray. Amen.
Mr. Craig?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, board members. I have to recognize the picture. We'll do that on the left side maybe.
Can I tell you about the South Carolina?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Board members, we have the agenda in front of us. You've had a chance to review it. There is one omission that, or one part that we need to remove for tonight.
I make a motion that we remove items number seventeen-one and seventeen-two at the request of the department head to be continued and put on the next agenda.
Now, the motion's there. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. And we, Mr. Attorney, we have closed session. What are the...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item three, attorney-client privilege. Item four, economic development. And item five, acquisition, potential acquisition in the law. Is that covered in the command?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to go in closed session?
Make a motion for in closed session.
Motion to go into closed session for item three, attorney-client privilege. Item four, economic development. Item five, acquisition of real property. And you can accept mine as a, as a second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we're in closed session. We're going.
Any other questions, board members?
Public information update on the 2026 reappraisal policy and field work procedures.
Good evening. Melissa Rackey, Tax Administrator. At the March 11th Board of Commissioner meeting, it was requested by the Board that we come to you with an update on the guidelines from our contracted reappraisal firm, Vincent Valuations. So we've prepared that for you tonight. I'm going to introduce Ryan Vincent, he's the owner of Vincent Valuations, to do the presentation for you. Ryan?
All right. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. My name is Ryan Vincent, I'm the owner of Vincent Valuations. We are a North Carolina-based reappraisal firm. And we contract to counties throughout the state of North Carolina to assist them with anything property tax-related. So we'll just jump right in here. Reappraisal is the process in which we go through and revalue all properties within the county based on current market value as of a particular day. So state law tells us that we have to do this at least once every eight years. So Pender County has elected to do this in effective January 1st, 2026. So Pender County is on a seven-year cycle. Normally, property tax values don't change in non-reappraisal years, except for a few instances. If you take a permit out or you do any work to your home, someone will visit your home. If you do a split or combine of any land, values could change. Those are the two basic reasons why values change in a non-reappraisal year. Just for the Board's knowledge, Pender County has roughly between 6,000 and 7,000 permits a year. That is, in all the counties we work in, that's one of the highest percentage of permits against parcel count of any county that we work in. So reappraisal applies only to real estate. It doesn't apply to personal property like boats, motors, vehicles. Those are reappraised annually. And in Pender County, there's currently approximately 53,000 parcels of real estate. So as part of this reappraisal, we're doing what we call a full measure list. So somebody from our company is visiting every property within the county. So we do the best we can to identify ourselves. So we have green vests, as you can see here. All of our staff has Pender County ID badges that identify themselves. We also have magnets on their cars. They do drive their personal vehicles, but we have magnets on their cars. And they also have these red door hangers. So if somebody's not home, or if they request more information, we leave a door hanger to let them know that we were there. So when we pull up to a house, and this varies from neighborhood to neighborhood, but when an appraiser pulls up to the house, they'll pull up either on the street or in the driveway, depending on the house and the layout of the house. They'll get out and they are instructed to go directly to the front door, or the most commonly used door of the house, and knock on the door. They'll introduce themselves, basically by saying, "I'm here from the Pender County Tax Office. We're working on the 2026 reappraisal. We're here to collect information on your house and verify information we have on file." So a few things that they'll ask when they're out there. They'll ask if there is a owner there. They'll ask bedroom count, bathroom count. If there's any, if we see when we walk up, if there's any attic space, we'll ask if that attic space is finished, or heated, or cooled. Just a few basic questions about the inside, how many fireplaces you may have. These characteristics are very important, not only for the tax office, but also for the county in general. So we get a lot of calls from banks, from fee appraisers, to query our data and ask what we have on file compared to what somebody might be using for a fee appraisal or for a refinance or a purchase. Another really important piece is damage assessments. So we all know we have hurricanes here. And so one of the things that, in the damage assessments I've been involved, that we're required to give to the state and to FEMA, is an estimate of value in the damaged area. So I don't know if you remember, a few years ago when Durham County had the gas explosion, I was working within the county and went in there immediately after the explosion happened and was tasked with giving a damage assessment to determine what level of assistance the state was going to give the county based on the amount of value that was there. So no trespassing signs. So that's a big question. We've actually had webinars given through School of Government to the tax assessors throughout the state about no trespassing signs. So our current policy on no trespassing signs is if we see one, we'll go directly to the door and knock on the door. If nobody's there, we will leave a door hanger and immediately leave the residence. So while we're on site, some things we also complete while we're on site is we measure every structure that's on site. So that's, again, important for the information, not only for tax assessment, but for other purposes. So again, we'll knock on the door. If there's anyone home, we'll ask them some questions. Then we will proceed to measure the outside of all of the structures of the home. We also, while we're on site, we also take a photo of the front and a photo of the back of the home. So when we're completed with this, the appraiser will go back to their car and verify all the information, verify that the card is completely filled out, and then go to the next property. So a few things that may change. If an appraiser is in a subdivision, they may park in a common area in the subdivision and walk to a few houses. So you may not see their car parked directly in front of your particular home, but they will walk from house to house if they're in a subdivision. If they're in a more rural area, they will pull off the road into the driveway, wherever is feasible. And that's what we have for today, so I'll welcome any questions. We did, in the last few weeks, put a frequently asked question online on the tax website. So if anybody has any questions, they can go there. Or they can feel free to always call the tax office. And we'll be happy to verify anybody who's there and answer any questions that anyone may have.
Have you had any more threats with people with guns, Fortin, Georgia?
Yeah, so we do this all throughout the state, from the coast to the mountains, small counties, large counties. And unfortunately, that's just part of what comes with the territory. So if one of our folks is threatened, they are trained to de-escalate and immediately leave the situation. We're not out there to force ourselves onto anybody. We're there to do the job that we're hired to do and the job that we're tasked to do. And if somebody requests us to leave, we leave immediately.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No questions? No questions about that at all?
Public comment for agenda items?
We have one sign up, Ms. Chairman, but she also signed up on the general comments. I'm not sure, and there's not an agenda item listed. But Patricia Colick?
I do have comments or questions, ladies and gentlemen.
If this pertains to the agenda items?
Yes, it does. It's pertaining to the gentleman you just spoke.
Okay. State your name and address and address the board.
Patricia Colick, 125 Spring Chase Lane, Rockaway Lane. I would like to know if he has the laws pertaining to the rights to come onto people's properties and if he can give you those laws that gives him the right to do so, to knock on the door and to ask those private questions. From my understanding, we have the ability only to take pictures from the sky or from the road. So I'd like that addressed.
Thank you. Is that all the comments?
Yes, sir.
Board members, we have the consent agenda. You've had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. Is there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to accept?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, board members. Approvals and resolutions. Resolution proclaiming April 2024 Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Pender County. Say, Yish, hey, I don't want to mess it up. What did you say?
Lauren Gish.
Gish.
Yes. I'm from the Rape Crisis Center of Coastal Horizons. So yeah, we would like to declare April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community. SAM Sexual Assault Awareness Month aims to raise public awareness about sexual abuse, harassment, and assault, and educate communities about how to be involved in prevention. This year, SAM's campaign theme, Building Connected Communities, calls on each of us to work together to prevent sexual abuse, harassment, and assault. We believe when anyone experiences sexual violence, every community member is affected. We must strive to build more connected, respectful, and inclusive communities to promote our collective well-being and protect against the risk of sexual violence. We believe all of our communities will be safer and stronger by making them more equitable for people of all gender identities and sexual orientations, races and ethnic backgrounds, ages, faiths, and abilities. Statistics show that over 53% of women and over 29% of men reported experiencing contact sexual violence in their lifetime. Most women and men across all sexual identities who experienced contact sexual violence reported that the person who harmed them was someone they knew. More than 1 in 4 non-Hispanic Black women, 29% exactly, in the U.S. were raped in their lifetime. 1 in 3 Hispanic women, 34.8%, reported unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime. More than 4 in 5 American Indian and Alaskan Native American women, 83.4% have experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. 32.9% of adults with intellectual disabilities have experienced sexual violence. 47% of all transgender people have been sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. As such, we must strive to create strong, connected communities that take care of one another and make decisions to ensure the safety and well-being of others to end sexual violence. The Building Connected Communities campaign is an opportunity for our community to join with others around the world in committing to preventing sexual assault, abuse, and harassment. I join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a hotline for Coastal Horizons for the rape center, sexual assault center?
Yes, there is. Off the top of my head, I remember the first few numbers and not all of them. Okay.
There is. Is there any other questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution for Pender County Board of Commissioners?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? The motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you. But we'll get this signed and, um... Request for purchase order to purchase, yes, that trainers worldwide for recycling and dispositional services for physical year '24 for $60,000.
Oh, wow.
I want to take an opportunity to kind of show you all. We have started a program to outreach for young students from high school and community college. We, last month, two months ago, we were at the Cape Fear Community College giving the job fair. And we presented this in a mascot, a dog called Splash. And next month, we're going to be at Hide the Tracks on the 2nd.
I have a horse called Splash.
There you go. And then we're also going to be at Pender High School. This is outreach to young students to introduce them to water and sewer. We see them right now, we're having a hard time getting applications. And we're trying to reach out to young students that want to join the industry. But anyway, the next five items are mine. So this is the Cologne Show. My name is Anthony Cologne. My name is Anthony Cologne. I'm the executive director of Pender County Utilities. And my first item is a request to increase a purchase order to Passafino Trainers Worldwide. This is for the tire recycling and disposal services. So, the board approved for solid ways to open a PO, open PO for Central Carolina Holdings. This is a contract that we've been having with them. It's a five-year contract. For the, over five years now, Central Carolina Holdings have been the only group providing these services. And they have been running kind of like some sort of monopoly. So, they're now increasing the prices. And this, of course, has to be passed to the customers. Back in November, around November the 9th, we discovered this company, Passafino, Passafino Trainers. They provide the same service for much less, and they also respond much quicker. So, we started a small PO of $29,000 to see how this will work, and they have proven themselves very worthy. We still have four years left in the contract with Central Carolina Holdings, although I've been told by our staff attorney that there is a little room in there. So, what we're asking is we would like to increase the PO that we did with Passafino Trainers to $60,000 to continue doing business with them, as they are now a new player in the, in the game, giving competition to Central Carolina Holdings. And that's my request. Is that okay with you all?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So, what do you mean by there's a little room? We have an ongoing contract, and you want to retain the services of another group for 60,000. Is that above and beyond the services that Carolina is providing us? Or in addition to, or in lieu of?
It's in addition, it's in addition to. We will continue doing business with Central Carolina Holdings. It's just good to know that we have another player in the game. So, we're pretty much running simultaneously. If Carolina, if Central Carolina Holdings can provide service immediately when we need it, we can always go to Passafino and get the same services for less and quicker. But we continue our, our contract with Central Carolina Holdings. We're not letting them go until our contract is due. Or, like I said, I have to go over the contract and take a look and see exactly what do we have in there that can let us get out of the contract if we have to. It's not my intention to do so. But it's good to know that there's another player in the game that can be competitive for the next time.
I got that. But what is this little room in the contract? Can we get out of the contract with Central Carolina Holdings, or can we not?
There's language that allows to contemplate the option to get out of it.
Well, isn't this $60,000 approval a little bit premature? Shouldn't we be exploring getting out of one contract before we start paying another vendor above and beyond what we've budgeted to pay Central Carolina Holdings?
I'm sorry, ma'am. When I say above and beyond, I was talking about the services, the cost. It's, it's out of the same pocket of money. It's not going above and beyond. I was talking about the services. They're a lot quicker, they're a lot quicker, a lot less price.
But we're still under contract with another vendor to do exactly the same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're asking for a, a purchase order to increase to Passafino Trainers Worldwide, Inc. for tire recycling and disposal services for this 2024 year?
That is correct. That's, we already have, we already have a PO for $29,000 with Passafino. I'm just asking to increase it to 60.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Remember last year, we went way over, and you had to come and ask for a whole bunch of money. If we stayed with Carolina, are we going to exceed? Are we going to need to come back and request for more money?
No, sir.
If we stay with Carolina, we don't need any more money?
We can stay with both of them. We don't have, we don't need any more money. Yeah. We don't, we don't need to add any more money. All I'm doing is just moving in a smart... So, when we started with the budget was 266,000, of which 170,000 went to Central Carolina Holdings. All right? So, out of that, 266, 29,000 went to a PO to Passafino Trainers. We're comparing the services. We're having them as a, as an alternate resource in case that we need them. All I want to do is increase it to 60,000, and I'm using both of that. We're still using Central Car, uh, Central Carolina Holding as the primary.
And you're not increasing your line?
We're not increasing the line.
So, you've got $266,000 budgeted, and so you've got 96,000 remaining. So, even if we did approve the PO for the Passafino, then you're still looking at 36 in your budget?
Yes, ma'am.
For any overages?
Yes, ma'am.
I got it now.
Yeah. So, all I need is your approval.
Motion approved.
Is there a second? All those favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
And so, you're still on deck. Approval for Batson Road Water Line Extension Recommendation Awarding to Herring Rabinberg.
Yes, as I have been telling you for the past six months, we're working on a, a water line extension at Batson Road. We had a group of citizens that came to us requesting water. A half a million dollar was budgeted for this project. So, 215,542 is the cost for the contractor to do this.
Say that again.
So, we put it out for bid. Herring Rabinberg was the lowest bidder, and we would like to get your consent to award this so that we can go ahead and break ground.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I just got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, you have, we have to cross Surf City Town limits somewhere to get here, right?
Yes, sir.
So, in the future, if they decided to annex that, how does that play into our system? Do we? I'm just curious. Is that something you want to answer later? It's more technical than it needs to be, then?
It, it is, it is technical, yes, sir. It's something that it will take a little bit longer of the time that it's needed right now.
All those favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Approval for US 421 Pump Station Force Main and Water Main Recommendation to Award State Utility Contractors, Inc.
Right. So, we're working on a project on Highway 421 to extend sewer lines from the Commerce Park up to Blueberry Road. This will be a force main, then at Blueberry Road, there will be a, a pump station. And then we also will extend water from 421 into Blueberry Road for a new development that is to come into that area. This is American Rescue Plan Act money. It's a principal forgiveness. So, it is a grant. It is already in place, 12,223,986. And we ran the bid, and a state utilities contractor was the lowest bidder. So, we would like to award this contract to state utility contractors so they can break ground.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Approval of amendment to Eastern, Eastern Pender Service Area Water System Improvements. Project to prepare new NCDQ funding applications for Columbia Union Township Water System Improvements. That was a lot.
That was a full mouth, yes, sir. So, what we're talking here is, as you know, I've been working on trying to get interconnection with the town of Harrods and moving down to 421 into Highway 11 so that we can loop the system.
So, you're talking about Western Pender County?
I am talking about Western.
Not Eastern Pender?
Correct, Western. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, that was, that was a misspell.
All right.
I will correct that. Yeah, we're talking about Western Pender. Yes. So, what we were doing, the process, and probably the reason why, why I put eastern in there is because out of the eastern project that we're doing right now with the water plant, I sat down with the engineering, and we reduced that project by 36 million dollars. Mr. James Proctor and I went to Palm Beach, Florida, and we visited six of this membrane water treatment plant. And we came back and gave input to the engineer firm, reducing the cost. We still want to stay within the 100 million dollars, but we want to make sure that we get what we need and not, not all that we want. So, when we did this cost, I asked CDM Smith if they would be willing to go ahead and look for money so that we can go ahead and work on this project on 421. And they say, you already cut the project by 36 million in the eastern side. Looking for this money will be only $35,000. I said, well, that, that's something that I need to bring to the board for them to allow me to go ahead and get CDM Smith to look for community block development grant, drinking water state revolving funds, and American Rescue Plan Act so that we can take water from Highway 11 into 421 towards to the town of Harrods and do the interconnection.
Let me ask you something. I mean, I have people calling me about this.
Yes, sir.
These people never voted to have that.
Yes, sir.
The one area, the other areas, they can't vote for it. They haven't got water yet. So, they said they're getting ahead of them. Sounds like it.
And I understand your...
People voted for that. I mean, they...
Yes. I understand your point.
They didn't want it.
Yes, sir. I understand your point 100%. But here, here's my, here's my point of view. Do we have customers that are going to benefit from this? Yes. We are a huge region in the area, and we're being recognized right now by the legislation as being interconnected with our neighbors. Harrods is a benefit to us to interconnect, excuse me, to interconnect. So, the first phase of this project is to create that loop between Highway 11 with the town of Harrods so that we can do interconnection with, with that town. They can use it, and we can use it in the same area. That some of our customers would benefit from this? That is just a plus. But my biggest concern is water quality and be able to loop our system and be able to interconnect with our neighbors. So, what I'm asking you tonight is, would you allow me to give this to CDM Smith so that we can officially have an engineer firm handling this project?
I think this is a good thing in light of the concerns about the quality of well water and health. And we've been having many, many discussions over a very long period of time with the residents of 421. We couldn't get it without a vote, but we couldn't get the financing because of the lack of density. There are some houses that are miles apart, and we couldn't get favorable financing. So, we've got to find some way to be equitable to all of our citizens to provide clean drinking water and safe drinking water. And I wholeheartedly approve this, and I support it, and I'm making a motion for approval.
You can't get a USA DA loan without, was there any vote for it?
So, we, we, we're trying to go first, sir. We're trying to go for CBPG, which should be principal forgiveness. We're trying to get grant money. It is our main. We have funding right now. We have enough money right now to do 5,000 feet coming from Harrow into Pender County. The rest of the money that we want to get is from that point into Highway 11 and connected with Pender Lee Road. That is what we're shooting for, and we're shooting for CBPG or ARPA. We're trying to do this with the least cost possible to the utilities and the county.
Do we have a motion in a second? I mean, we have a motion. Is there a second? Motion in a second. All those favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
I have some new questions.
I'm sorry, is you...
No, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
I did have some other questions.
You raised your hand.
And we're all, approval of purchase order to Timmons Group to award the contract for wastewater management plan project.
So, our wastewater treatment plan has a permit for discharge, and that permit is get renewed approximately every five years or so. And it was recently renewed. And as a part of that renewal, in the language of the renewal permit, it asks for a wastewater management plan project. This management plan project, it needs to be done by, by an engineer firm. It needs to be staffed by an engineer. We have the money funded in, in, in our budget. It comes at a cost of $72,000. We put it out for bid. We didn't receive any bidders to begin with. We put it out for a second time, and Timmons Group was the only one to show up. So, we would like to award this to Timmons. It is a requirement of the state, so it's, it has to be done sooner or later.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
I say.
Motion in a second. All those favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I think you can sit down.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate your patience and your help.
The Cologne Show is over.
10.1 Discussion. Discussion on Amending the Order of Business for Public Comment. So, I asked the stands for to put this back on the agenda for discussion. It, our rules of order has outliers, lays out the order in which the agenda is supposed to flow. And it was never in any, according to the rules of order, any amendment to that has, has to be approved by the majority of the board. And that never happened to move it from the top to, to split it in half. So, there's been discussion. Commissioner Groves has discussed it, and several members of the club...
So, where, where did you get that from? Where did you get that information from?
Out of Rules of Order. I had traced them to me back last year.
Yeah, but this change was made...
After I came on board.
Okay.
So, the public has also made mention of it as of any inconvenience of having to sit through the meeting. And they want to, they would like to combine it back in at the beginning of the meeting. So, this is for that discussion to take place of pros and cons, suggestions, and... And then we'll bring it back. This needs to be voted on to change it to the way it is now. If not, it will revert back to the way it previously was at the next meeting.
And would you clarify the way it previously was?
It was all public comment after the public information.
Well, initially, that was an accommodation for the folks that said they couldn't get here at 4:00. So, either one thing needs to happen. I think if you're going to do this, if you're going to change the closed session to 4:00 and have the public meeting at 5:00, then the folks that have comments about things that are non-agenda related probably would need more time to get there, unless you're going to go with 5:00 general meeting every time. So...
My concern too is we get hung up, people, we get hung up on stuff. We never get moved to the agenda. I know people do it.
And then there was that. There was some disruptive public comments that went on and on and delayed our staff and our folks who were here and our visitors who were here for agenda items. So...
And Mr. Chairman, if I would, if, if I could, I would like to make a motion.
We can't, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it tonight, and then if it needs to be, if there's consensus to put on the agenda...
We'll discuss this. What we did tonight was terrible. It was terrible. We still got people back there. They still got to wait till everything was over, until she speaks. If she could have spoke at 4:00 and went home, all of them, we could have carried on our business, and we could have went into closed session and had as much time as we needed. What we did tonight, in my opinion, definitely not working. When I ran...
Mr. Groves, you were, you were a part of that vote to, to move that meeting to, you were, you were a, a yea for moving that meeting to 5:00 for the publics.
I wasn't aware we were still going to make the public wait until after the meeting to make a comment. We're putting a double-edged sword in them, the way we're doing it. And I don't know. I don't know.
So we will, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting to have, take a formal vote of moving it to where it is now.
I think we do that though, like Mr. Groves talked about. If we, the five o'clock, we're gonna have to move that back, I mean.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that once we determine what difference it's going to make to have our closed session meeting at four o'clock, that kind of would go hand in hand with this decision.
So right now, we're not, we're not operated by rules of order. As far as the agenda portion goes, because it was never, it was never agreed by the majority of the board to change it. So until that, that vote's made to make that change. If I'm reading the rules of order right, Trey, am I reading it right? It states in there that.
You are, Mr. Chair, you are correct. It was not voted by the full board to move the four o'clock comment to after all the other conversations. It was not voted to do that.
And I have no problem with it either way. I just wanted to make sure. It's been, was brought to the attention of people that went back and looked at our meetings since it happened and tried to find where it was approved, approved change took place. And it's not there. So that's my only thing. We're gonna change it and let's do it the right way regarding the board rules.
I would call it was discussed in closed session and agreed upon. So because of the reasons that I had mentioned before, as a concession to the folks that said they couldn't get here at four o'clock in part. So whatever you want to do is fine.
So at the next meeting, it'll stay as it is and we'll vote for a change yes or no. How we do, how, how we want that to work, I guess.
Okay, are we voting on the time of the meeting or the time of public comment?
Public comment. Public comment. The, the majority of the public wants us to have our meeting start at six o'clock. If y'all hold it down, that is the consensus of ninety-five percent of people I've talked to.
I found out, you know.
And it may not be the case for everybody. Some people may like it up. I don't necessarily want to be here until one o'clock in the morning. When I was on the school board, our meetings started at six o'clock. And some nights we didn't leave out of there until ten or eleven or twelve o'clock. And those weren't fun meetings and Mr. Van, he was a witness to some of those late night meetings. I can see where that can be an issue for our second meeting of the month when we have the public hearings for the, for the planning board stuff. I would be fine moving the, the, the first meeting of the month to six o'clock. That would be my preference, but that wasn't what the board decided the night we decided to do this. The compromise was to move the closed session to the four o'clock slot and move to five o'clock slot so that people could give another hour to get here. And that's what we've done. This discussion tonight is on amending the agenda to reflect what our rules of order suggest or recommend that we, how we present the agenda to the public. So that'll be, that vote will take place next meeting. Any other discussion on that topic? Appointments, eleven point one. Reappointments of the Board of Equalization and Review.
So technically four reappointments and one regular appointment. As you know, the talented Ms. Radke has been working hard to get the, everything together for the Board of Equalization Review. I have received four applications from members who served last year, some who have served more than one year. That includes Leslie Green, Chip Garman, Kathleen Sumner, and Larry Bullock. In addition to that, I have received a new application from Michael Willman. It is not on his application that's in your book, but I did speak to him and he said he was willing to serve on this board if you would have him. If you were to appoint them, they would all have the same term and it's one year. It would begin January first, twenty twenty-four, expire January, or sorry, December thirty-first, I was typing on that, twenty twenty-four. Should they want to apply for next year, that's a different story. In addition to this, the Board of Commissioners holds responsibility of appointing a chair to the Board of Equalization and Review. Last year, Mr. Bullock served as the chair. He additionally has the most experience with tax appeals and is willing to serve as the chair again if you so choose him.
So there is the list of suggested members of the Board of Equalization and Review for appointment for a one-year term starting retroactive back to January first through December thirty-first of this year. Is there any questions about any of these advocates? If not, is there a motion to approve all, including Mr. Bullock as the chair?
I'll make a motion.
Second. A motion in second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Maple Hill Water and Sewer, any water boards, sewer boards tonight? None. Social Services Board. We are not, and that's the Social Services Board. Approval of Budget Amendment to Increase DSS revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I am here requesting a budget amendment for an increase in county funding to my foster care line. This is necessitated by an increase in the population of foster care children as well as a new payment system for kinship care, which has never been done, which was implemented in December of this year. So we're paying kinship placements, which has never been done. So that kind of necessitates, along with the addition in population, to ask for an increase. The one caveat to this is, is that minimally, we should expect a fifty percent reimbursement on any expenditures that we make.
Were members there's the presentation is there and a motion?
How much of this, if any, is reimbursable?
All of it's reimbursable, minimally fifty percent.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Is that all? We are now out. The Social Services Board, nineteen, public comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have five signups.
Yeah, I'll read the little thing here. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairperson in the order in which the names appear on the sheet. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speaker, speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity, and discussing discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. Speakers are limited to two to three minutes depending on the number of people signed up. And the chair will decide the limit before the people start. So we'll start with three minutes. Mr. Thurman will keep time.
Yes, sir. Char Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and fellow neighbors. My name is Charlene Robinson and I reside at three zero five South McCray Street here in Bergoff. I'm here to speak on behalf of Think Pender Strong. We are a coalition of volunteers united by our passion to make a difference in the lives of our neighbors, particularly those facing homelessness, food insecurity, and limited access to essential resources. We're proud to introduce Pure, the first Pender Unity Resource Expo set to take place on Saturday, April twentieth, right here in the Pender County parking lot. With the support of our county manager and director of housing, we're fostering a resilient and supportive community where essential resources and services are accessible to all. At the core of Pure is a commitment to addressing immediate needs while building long-term solutions. We're thankful to have the support of local businesses, nonprofits, and churches, and individuals who've donated food, items for emergency resource kits, organizing food drives, and providing transportation to and from the event for people from their communities. Pure will offer a comprehensive range of services from housing and veteran support to employment and emergency preparedness. We have confirmed the participation of nearly thirty organizations, including Veteran Services, the American Red Cross, the NC Works Mobile Unit, Coastal Horizon Center, Pender County Christian Services, and many, many others. These partnerships demonstrate the need to connect regional service providers with opportunities to increase their ability to serve our citizens in Pender County. Pure also will offer free onsite health screenings, including vision checks by the Lions Club and blood pressure screenings by the county health department. We also have Novant Health's mobile mammogram unit, which will be offering mammograms onsite. These, these services underscore our holistic approach to community wellness as well as crisis prevention. But our goal extends beyond this upcoming event. We aim to increase access to these vital resources by duplicating this initiative in the rural areas of our county. Right now, we are working with planning expos in Maple Hill in collaboration with Lee's Chapel Baptist Church in Willard, working with the Willard Outreach Organization. We are confident that by continuing these efforts, we can make sure that essential resources reach every corner of Pender County. Think Pender Strong operates as a volunteer collective functioning without a dedicated budget or fundraising efforts as all food and emergency supplies have been generously donated by the broader community. We're driven by compassion for our fellow citizens. We're building a network of support that spans Pender County. And we are committed to transferring, transforming conversation into tangible action to increase quality of life, address health disparities, tackle food insecurity, and prevent homelessness in our county. We are here today seeking the support of the Pender County Board of Commissioners for this Pender Unity Resource Expo. Together, we can stand strong embodying the spirit of unity and compassion that defines our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Debbie Cruz?
First, I want to thank you for your time. And I am not a speaker, so you have to bear with me. I reside at, I'm Debbie Cruz and I reside at forty-seven sixty-eight Horse Branch Road. Right now, I'm living with my son and in the process of getting my own home put there. We purchased this land a while back. And we wanted to put up a shed so that we could have coverage for our tractors, so that we could dis the land, not dis the land, but bush hog the land. And our tractors have to sit out in the weather because we couldn't get a permit because we do, I did not have a house on my land. So therefore, you know, my tractor stood out in the weather. I didn't have any idea that we had to have a permit. We were just four poles and a roof, but I found that out. So I appreciate you trying to get the board to look into this and trying to do something about this. I said that at this point, it will not help me because I'm in the process of getting my permit for my house. So I should be able to get a permit for my shed now. But maybe it will help somebody else in the future that we come together and let people be able to build a shed to cover their tractors or whatever they have because they've spent a lot of money on this equipment. And, you know, I, I moved from Hampstead and there's a lot of HOAs there. And I hate to think that the whole county is a HOA. And, you know, I just want to see that we can do with our land what we choose to do with our land within reason. I understand you have to have some rules and regulations. But a shed for somebody to put their tractors on is not, I don't think that's gonna hurt anybody. Or for me to take my green kids out there and have a picnic.
Can I ask a question? Do you have a farm?
I have, I do not have a farm. We basically, my son basically has a family farm to feed his children, but it's not a farm to sell anything. But I have, on my partial, I have five point two acres. When we first bought it, we had fourteen point two. We divided the nine acres between my three children. And on my part, I have five point two.
I thought it was understanding that if you had a farm, if you were to try it, you could build it. Isn't that true?
Yes, sir, for a bona fide farm.
But I'm not considered a bona fide farm because I don't sell, you know, raise stuff to sell or whatever. And we want, we would just, you know, raise stuff to feed our family. And I consider that a farm. But, you know, it's not considered a bona fide farm, but I consider it a farm because I'm raising food to feed my family. Another thing, I, you know, I agree that, because I have been sitting there, that if you could do something to where, even if the public speaking like this could be moved up front some. So some people that needed to leave before could do that. That would be much appreciated too. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Debbie Walker?
My name is Debbie Walker. I reside at eleven fifty-two Union Chaparral Road, Bergoff. I'm here before you again, asking, I thank Mr. Cologne and you all for listening. And I thank Mr. Cologne for what he's done. He's done more than the, for people that worked at the water processing that was for, for him years and years and years. I put in for the water before the water was ever even started here in Pender County. To this day, I have not received it. I paid my hundred and twenty dollars back then and I still have not received it. I would appreciate you all.
Where do, where do you live?
Union Chaparral Road, right across from the water tower. I would appreciate it if you would work with, you all would work with Mr. Cologne and help him get us some water. We deserve water like everybody else. We, we, we pay our money. We deserve to be treated right. Treat us all alike. We are all God's children. And do what is right for the people. Listen to us. We're, we're not talking just to be talking. And I know, and I, I appreciate you listening, but do something about the listening. Help us, help us. When you help us, you help us to help you because we're all in this together. And I would appreciate all that you can do to help us get water. Because like I said, I paid my hundred and twenty, twenty dollars before the water ever came. And to this day, I don't have water. I never understood, living right across from the tower while we never got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Patricia Collet?
Good evening, board. Patricia Collet, I live at Rocky Point, one twenty-five Spring Chase Lane. I came here in front of you today really for many reasons, but one really important one I want to speak about. I had lost a very dear friend of the family's from a heroin overdose. I stood in this room, I think about two years ago, Jackie Newton, correct, with the health department, saying that they had all this money. And they were supposed to do something, went and report back to this board. It never happened. I lost a very young, preservable man with a son, probably five or six years old. How many of you have lost people in this room? Family members? My God, what is it gonna take for you people to do something about that? Where is the money that was awarded to the health department? Where is it? Jackie, I heard you make a phone call during the primaries to get that information. Yet still today, people are dying, dying in our community. And you are all responsible for that, for your neglect of doing your job. You're imprisoning them. They have, they, they, look, they're going to jail, the new jail that you built. They're going to jail. They're going to jail. They're not getting recovery. Small crimes, that's what we got the new jail for. So we imprison our people. We come here, we speak to you about it. Two years later, still nothing is done. When does it stop? When does it stop? You're responsible for every death in this county, every overdose because you're not providing the care for the people. And you have the money and you're ignoring it. So who has the money? Where is it? We won't get any answers here today because they can't answer that. You won't, will you? None of you will answer. You won't even ask me a question today. Somebody's dead. Somebody's child's dead. Less than a month ago, March third, I think it was the day of the primary, oh my God, when I found out. How do you sleep at night knowing that people are dying? How do you sleep at night knowing that people are dying? I know that some of you have family members that have died from heroin overdoses, from the fentanyl that's coming in our county. Our sheriff can't control it. You don't get the help. What are we to do? What are we supposed to do? Just sit and watch our family and our friends and our neighbors die? Because you just don't have any solutions? You don't look for the solutions? You don't have holistic care? That's coming out all over the, all over the news. Holistic care is important, but yet you have nobody willing to do the research. Another thing I came here for is because I witnessed something at the Board of Education, and I do believe there's an SBI investigation going on with the county election. What I witnessed that happened on that board that evening with a truck filled with a burner propane needs to be directed, and maybe y'all need to get up with a special Bureau of Investigation out of the county of Jacksonville. I witnessed tally machines being pushed back, covered up. I couldn't watch them put these ballots in. I have this on film and video. And that machine was pushed to the back room, out of my sight, because guess what?
Time's up.
Thank you very much.
Ken Smith?
My name is Ken Smith. I live at one thirteen or Third Avenue in Atkinson. Chairman George, fellow commissioners up there, I want to thank you for first and foremost your service and being willing to listen to the public. Tonight, um, I want to say this is the first time I've ever come to sign up to speak at a county commissioner meeting, and the reason why is not a reason that I ever thought I'd have to. Uh, this past month, on a Tuesday night at six twenty PM, uh, I had my three-year-old on the soccer field in Bergoff, and to my shock, uh, there was someone who was arrested, a young lady, uh, after, um, having a pistol out, shooting it there in the public. She got a misdemeanor for that. Uh, I was there on the field within a rock distance throw of, of that whole incident. And just shocked, first and foremost, as someone who goes out there right regularly with my son and my wife, uh, for his practices of just the complete lack of, uh, lawlessness and at times, lack of, uh, any kind of presence of any kind of police force or Sheriff's Department. Almost each time, we smell marijuana on the grounds. Uh, a few weeks ago, there was a young man who had a pellet slash BB gun that was shooting children on the playground before anyone could get there. Uh, he had already left. Uh, there's constant profanity that's constantly going on, uh, with these older children that are coming in, and you've got three and four-year-olds there playing soccer. Uh, just two weeks ago, also witnessing, uh, a young man throwing up gang signs over to another person that was on a, a second part of the field communicating with them. Talking to parents that have had children, that have gone through the complete system over there at the park and recreation. They will say to you that it's gotten worse year after year, that it's never been, really felt like they were safe, but it's just gotten worse. Uh, one parent, uh, that knew that was coming, wanted me to tell you that their child, they were in the dollar store in Bergoff recently, and a balloon, one of those helium balloons that I guess they had in there popped, and this little kid that was about four years old fell onto the ground and was in tears and crying, and when the mom asked what was wrong, he said, are we being shot at again? A second child, a mom was telling me that now has decided to pull her child out of the soccer program, said that the reason why is because the daughter, every night, whenever she goes to bed, says, mommy, can we pray that we don't get shot when we go play soccer? Even my own son, who just turned four years old, when I asked him, does he want to go to soccer, this is a kid that's fully energetic and, uh, loves sports, it's told me that he never wants to go back out to that field for fear of being shot. The definition simply of fear by the Webster is "an unpleasant emotion caused by the belief that someone or something is dangerous, likely to cause pain or a threat." And so what happened that Tuesday night at six twenty, although no one was physically injured?
Ms. Smith, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, good.
Thank you.
Those are all the signups, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Items from county attorney.
Um, the, having covered things in closed session, only one, I believe would be an additional closed session personnel, if I correct the mission. That would be the only, only other item.
Thank you, sir. County manager?
Yeah, I just want to say that the county staff has been working hard on the, developing the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and your first, uh, budget work session is scheduled for April twenty-ninth, so in about four weeks, and we're on schedule.
Is that it? I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Ms. Newton?
Um, I'm going to address my remarks to our, uh, tax director and her, um, vendor, who made a presentation to us today. I don't know what kind of training program you have for your field assessors, but I personally, and I'm just sharing personal experience, I had a young man, uh, walk down a tenth of a mile driveway through the woods and show up at the backside of my house. I was in the house downstairs at the time. There was no knock on the door. He was not wearing a vest. He didn't have a vehicle with magnetic signs on the back. I'm standing in my kitchen, and a black truck rolls down my driveway and passes by where I'm standing in the kitchen, headed towards my barn, around my garage and down my, by my barn, and I go out on the porch, seeing the rear end of the truck go by, and I'm going, hey buddy, hey, hey, stop, wait, who are you? He rode, rode all the way down to the end of my driveway with me walking down the driveway behind him going, whoa, stop, who are you? Um, so I didn't see utility light, and from the back of his truck, I didn't see any signs. And, um, he wasn't invited to get out of the truck, but from what I could tell, he didn't have on a vest. Um, and showed back up at my house, uh, early one morning to make an appointment, which he never showed back up for. So I have elderly folks in the community, uh, who have been very gracious about letting the folks go around, but were a little bit upset when they asked to, one, go in their house, and two, go inside their buildings. Um, that is just unacceptable. So what you have outlined is what I understood to be the case, but the concerns that I have is not from what I'm hearing or what I saw myself, but from where your employees and your agents or your contract people veer from what you've outlined to us. So that's all I have to say about that. So, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Cruz?
Oh, I only have one thing. It was brought to my attention. We need a paint recycling bin at the Rocky Point Convenience Center. So, um, I asked Mr. Cologne if he could check in on that. Um, been a lot of arguments about not being able to get rid of paint, among other things, but maybe we could just get the paint argument settled. That would be going forward.
I just want to, I say a few, few comments. I want to agree to disagree with Commissioner Newton about moving that statute off the court out of square. I mean, uh, we also have people wanting to change the name of Pender County because it's named after the general in the Civil War. So the history is what it is, and I have no, uh, I've reason to see why we would want to move that statute. It's been part of the history of Pender County, so that's my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I just have, um, one thing that I, I really wanted to brag on the county about, and it's about our Commerce Park. Um, I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but it's practically full, and, um, we have some great, exciting opportunities coming that way. Polyhose, I don't know if any of y'all have ever heard of them, but they bought a significant piece of property. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Sure. Um, I'm talking about the Pender Commerce Park, and that, the, um, the idea that it's practically full, and that we are eagerly seeking more land to be able to continue to develop the future of Pender County's industrial park. Um, Polyhose was who I was talking about just a few minutes ago, purchased a significant piece of land, and that deal has closed, and they continue to expand, and, um, there are more opportunities that are going to be coming to Pender County that I think, uh, people are going to be very happy with. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. I, I'll be brief. Um, so I sit on the Wilmington WMPO board now, and the, as you all know, the traffic camp coming into Wilmington Bridge opened up. Everybody was excited. It was ahead of schedule. It'll reclose to the, going out of Wilmington, starting on April eighth. And the comments from the DOT is that the first phase was easy, the second phase is not going to be so much. So if you're planning to go into downtown Wilmington and that area, there's no room for stacking like there was on the, um, on the Leland side of the bridge. So they expect major congestion in the, in the Wilmington area for the, between April eighth and the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, unless they finish early. So if you plan accordingly to, to go downtown, I would go really late or really early. So, uh, there's that. And then the opioid settlement money was mentioned tonight, and if, um, first of all, I'd like to go back online from last month's meeting, last meeting that was presented, the plan was presented, and where the funds that have been allocated to Pender County will be spent is outlined in that, that presentation. Um, it's just a matter of paying attention to what's going on. If there's no other comments, uh, I have a motion to go back into closed session for personnel.
Motion to go into closed session for item three personnel.
I have a second. All those who favor raise your right hand. Thank you. We're in closed session.